Schools that exist there. Honestly, during the morning and afternoon rush hours, though, a speed limit reduction is not needed since the traffic is stop and go. But at other times, it's difficult to access or turn off of North Long Lake Road with traffic coming at you at 55 miles an hour. I live in the Lone Pine Development, and it is difficult to turn left out of the Lone Pine Development onto North Long Lake Road much of the day. So I hope this board will take action on this issue as soon as possible before there's a serious accident or even a death. And I personally have witnessed two rear end collisions in the last two months on North Long Lake Road. The second issue involves organic waste pickup by GFL. I recently contacted them and asked if they had this service. The woman at their local service center told me that Garfield Township does not allow them to collect organic waste. Not sure if this is correct, but if it is, I'd like to suggest that you review your policy and allow this to happen. It's a matter of good stewardship for the environment and makes a lot of economic sense and convenience for the residents of Garfield Township. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak in public comment?
Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And I will, I just would, real quickly, we have a couple of speed studies that are underway now. We actually are able to request speed studies now at township. We've never even been able to have any input or even request them. But it is ultimately the state police's decision, I believe, county road commission and state police, whether they reduce them. So we can initiate a space, a speed study in, go ahead, Chris.
He and I have been in contact and kind of explained the process to him, so we're working with the shared department to collect data and bring it back to this board at some point for consideration.
This will be the third one I'm aware of that were done this year if we do this one. So thank you for the request there. And Chuck, I don't think we have a policy against forbidding it, do we?
I literally asked them to do that.
Okay.
And they said, we don't, we're good at burying trash.
So we do not have a policy forbidding it. I promise you, we don't have a policy forbidding it. So I didn't normally react back, we responded to public comment, but I just couldn't resist. Yeah, Chloe?
We do also offer waste passes at the front desk that you can pick up and bring a certain amount to the brush pass for free. So that's an option, too. We do that twice a year.
All right. So thank you for your comments. All right. Next item is the review and approval of the agenda. It is an amended agenda and then any conflicts of interest anybody might have. I think we, because of some incomplete data, we've agreed to remove items C, D, and F out of new business. We're waiting for some more data to complete that action on those items. So from there, I'd take any other comments or things anybody would like to do.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda that's been amended.
And support.
Motion made and supported to approve the agenda as amended, removing items C, D, and F under new business. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Consent calendar, Anne.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, minutes, September 9th, 2025, regular meeting, and September 16th, 2025, study session, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $656,444, six cents, recommend approval. In consideration of resolution 2025-26-T, creating a Silver Lake Mill Foil Special Assessment and calling for a public hearing on October 14th, 2025, recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any item that anybody on the board would like to remove and place elsewhere on the agenda? Any item staff would like to have removed? Any item anybody from the public would like to remove and place elsewhere? Seeing none, the motion would be in order?
I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported to adopt the consent calendar as presented. Anne, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Gustinelli?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
And J. McManus?
Yes, thank you. Correspondents? Chris, did you want to comment? Is this just written update correspondence or are we speaking to that this evening?
So our assessor just wanted to communicate that to the board, so we, that's why we included that, just mentioning that we hired a new employee and then some good work by our, one of our appraisers.
Okay. Next item is reports. So we'll move on to our county commissioner's report. Lauren?
Good evening, everyone. Lauren Flynn, county commissioner, District 2. Two weeks ago, we had a study session over the next processes in building a new jail or getting that process in order. It is going to be set up in two different committees off the bat, kind of like a program committee and a technical committee, and those two committees will work together to figure out what are the needs, our community needs in our jail facility. These meetings are going to be open to everyone. They're not going to be closed meetings, they're not going to be private. Input is really important, and these are going to be robust meetings as they grow with more people within the community that have worked with this population or continue inside and outside of the jail. So this will be a lot of conversation, and we're going to work really hard to make it the right building that we need. I know supervisor Barshaf, manager Barshaf, he would appreciate that. We did, last week, we voted in our new canvassers. Excited for that because as chairman, Steve Horn, that was there, really expressed what an important group of people these are. They are supporters of the clerks, they're last line of defense in our elections to make sure everything goes smoothly. So I always take that very seriously when that, when that comes up on our agenda. We also hired our health director. We hired Mike Leahy, our current deputy health director. The candidates were all extremely experienced and valuable, but with big lifts coming forward with the septic ordinance and other things in the health department, cuts and everything like that, it really was important to know that Mike Leahy, who we've been working very well with already, will be there to continue forward. Lastly, did attend the EDC meeting this morning, the Economic Development Corporation, and wanted to let you know that admin did give an update on the prosperity plan, the unified prosperity plan, and that we'll be coming again with a final draft to the supervisors for their final input. And then we should see that in the next coming weeks.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Lauren?
All right, you know how to get ahold of me.
Thank you. MMR report. Think we might have a new director?
Yeah, good evening. Allow me to introduce myself. My name's Jeff Hayford. I'm the new manager for MMR. I think some of you probably heard that I was coming up. Danny has filled in and kind of helped out over the transition. Just a little quick bio, I come with 18 years of experience. I was downstate in a huge EMS system, 18,000 911 calls a year. I was as far south and east as you could go into the state of Michigan. I don't think I need to pull the map out, but Monroe County, down at the very bottom. I've always had a lifelong dream of living up north. I spent all my free time up here with my family, my kids, and this job come along. It's going to be a challenge, but I'm looking forward to it. I've kind of had a lot of dealings with boards and different entities down there, did the same job, just a little smaller scale up here. My friends will constant, you know, ask how things are going. I'm like, same job, different people, different location. So I apologize for not getting the report to you as they had come in the past. I have a little issue with some of the reports, the way that they are right now, some things that I'd like to change. But I guess before I get to that, let me just, just to express a few different things. Now that I've started, I've here, been here maybe just under a month now, right now I'm just trying to identify the problems, identify the things that I need to fix right away and get things up and running like they should be. I'm happy with the staff that I have. They're very receptive to me right now. I think some of them are a little bit nervous, but they all want to change for the positive, which is good in today's world. We do have some staffing issues at times. I'm looking at redeploy, a redeployment plan to make sure that we have all of our trucks or ALS units staffed appropriately for every single day of the week, seven days a week, 365 a year. I've met with your chief numerous times now, we just spent about two hours yesterday. Great guy, definitely looking forward to building a relationship with him and pursuing, you know, the things that need to be done to protect the citizens here and give them the medical treatment that they need in a timely response. So that's why I've been looking at some of this data that has been produced and given to you. I'm not really a big fan of the way that it's recorded and then distributed out. I'm looking at some ways, and I just actually met with our head dispatch communications leader, she's a manager as well, and gave her the statistics that I would like to see in the future. Before any changes are made, I would obviously, you know, show you and see, make sure I hear what you want to say or see and hear every month, so that way it's useful information that we can take and build on and then incorporate that into our status plan and deployments as we go forward. This township is a unique township, it's a very large township. I've learned that quite well. I think this is where most of the 911 calls come from, in the transports. And being in the private sector, you know, the call volume is what we need to be here for everybody, not just in Garfield Township, but the other entities that we provide service for. On top of that, I'm really large and supportive of the community. My old position, which I don't try to reference too much because it's the, you know, back when I did this job, but I really think community involvement is important. I want my crews, and I will have my crews out with special events, schools, churches, fundraisers, whatever. The chief knows that, and we're going to be attending the fire day rally back, I think it's October 4th, I believe, one of the fire stations is having their open house. So we'll plan on being that, being there for that. Just have a whole bunch of other notes. I'm also open to questions every day. My office is open, I would like for you to stop by. We're still a little bit under construction there, pounding nails and building walls and doing stuff. My office is actually put together now, I lost the first week trying to work on a little laptop, which isn't very good for me, so I'm a little bit more productive on that. I'm trying to catch up with the hospital and all the staff and different entities throughout this county. So a little backed, backed up, overwhelmed, but I'll get there, I know it'll get, I'll get there. I got to find a house, too. Been living in Interlochen State Park in my camper for the last three weeks and yeah, it's been, yeah, it's been fun running to the shower there and coming to work, washing my clothes at the station. I did put an offer on a house this morning, so hopefully that, that transpires and goes where I need to. So anyways, I'm here. I'll do everything I can to make everything better and grow from there. So that's, I didn't leave a comfortable, good-paying, 18-year job, and my family downstate, they come up here to not be successful, so I had no turning back now. So if there's anything that you would like to ask or discuss about these reports, I'll answer them the best I can. I'm not sure who I send them to, in an email that puts the agenda...
Is it to Karen? Is it Karen? She's our...
Okay, that's who I sent them to, and I didn't get them to her. She wanted them by Thursday at noon, and I didn't get them to her at that time, so sorry. That will change in the future, but so maybe next month, I'll put something together, a small package, and then we can kind of explain it and grow from there if you'd like, just so we can get really good information to you.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Jeff, what big is your territory for MMR? How, just the...
I have Grand Traverse and Antrim County, and also I have inherited Crawford County. So, yeah. So that's why I'm going to, that's why it was kind of difficult to find a house somewhere where I wasn't driving an hour and 10 minutes to Grayling and then over here, but hopefully land something in the South Boardman area. But I won't spend as much time over there, it's a lot smaller, I'm pretty self-sufficient, so I can handle a lot of that from over here.
Right. All right. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Engineering report, construction update. Jennifer?
Oh, she's got lots of papers.
Well, good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham Gordy-Frazier, and in a facility located in Garfield Township officially at 1820 O. Hollow.
Nice.
To say that, so, nope, the pleasure's all mine, and I am very proud to be, well, right now, paying taxes. I haven't had to pay the tax bill yet, but yeah. But no, so it's official. So I look forward to, yeah, we're planning our open house and definitely looking forward to you guys stopping over and seeing the new digs. It's nice, my office is super clean because I haven't brought anything over yet. So it's, yes, so that aspect, no, it's been wonderful, and I'm very proud of that, and that's been a motivation of mine personally and to invest where we work. So I hope that you guys, you know, appreciate that, too, or, because, yeah, we've worked well, myself, almost 22 years with you guys, so. Anyway, with that being said, you should have in your packet our report. A lot of things working through with DPW and communicate with your township manager and supervisor frequently on a lot of these things. Some specific highlights, the McCray PRV, we have successfully worked through, it's now called the Brixton, is the name of that development, and we've been doing utility reviews, but no, they've been very amicable, working with us, providing us an easement for that new PRV location, and DPW has set eyes on that, so that's now into Eagle for an amendment to the existing permit. That was kind of a bundle package with other PRVs, and no, we couldn't be happier. It's in a location that one is going to help them with pressures, the fire department, it's definitely well off the highway and within a setback that for DPW staff, they can go there and freely access the facility without worrying about getting hit by a car anymore, because before it was right at that corner, McCray and 37, and that's all we had for room. So we're very thankful that that opportunity presented itself and able to move ahead with Some of these items, working with DPW on tank inspections again, it's five years, so they've empowered me to prepare those proposals and coordinate with, typically we use Dixon as our go-to, to provide all those tank inspections. And so you guys are due again for your five-year master meter. That's been continuing to be monitored and successfully reading real time to, and coordinating with the city. And some of the stuff, I know, like I said, the supervisor manager are very acutely aware, but we are finding ironically, our max day demands fall on Tuesday. I don't, you know, I, that's, that's been very enlightening, so we're trying to figure out who's doing what on Tuesdays. So I was just on the phone with Kent Superintendent and another, looking at all of our large customers and trying to peel back the layers of, maybe we can spread that out and somebody can do other things on, not a Tuesday. And because, and so I am all ears, if you guys are, you know, can think of any big customers, I've gone through the list, because it used to be Muntz and Laundry Facility, well, they're no longer, they sent that downstate, so they're not using water. But one that did pique my interest recently, looking at the large customer base, is McCartell. They're a water supplier, so potentially there's avenues. So we're going through each of the big customers right now and their meters and seeing who may be contributing, because Tuesday's a very interesting day. Not like a Monday after, you know, we've had tourism and the hotels are, you know, doing laundry. I know, so I, yes, so if anybody has any ideas, but we are, it's been nice to have that data available to continue to evaluate. Ridgeview Court, one of your trustees is very familiar with that project. No, Elmer's has been doing a wonderful job. Water mains installed, they've made the connections, and so at this point right now, they are putting gravel base down. We've been contracted through the road commission to provide full-time inspection, and we're told in about a couple of weeks, Denise, for an update for you specifically. And we've continued to communicate with property owners, and we've had an inspector out there as well, and some, no, Elmer's has done a very good job.
They've done excellent, excellent.
I will relay that, thank you. Other notes, the city, we've been having meetings with them monthly, just to be on the forefront, because we do know at some point our water contract is going to be up for renewal, and also with outstanding Eagle permits and connections for Long Lake Township, also with the Copper Ridge, or, excuse me, not Copper Ridge, but the Grand Travers Commons, that service district. Right now, we've navigated a temporary agreement to allow them access to the booster station so they can do the improvements, but still working with them as far as deciphering who ultimately is going to take over that service district, what that looks like. And we have definitely, you, the township has done a very good job of presenting your position and our, where your interests align, and I think it's just a matter of them coordinating internally with their staff of what they're comfortable with, because the direction from this board is there's a desire for the township to take over that service district and have the ability to provide that level of operations maintenance with those customers. So the city's just reviewing through with treasury and billings to get a better comfort level with that. Water contract, or, excuse me, water reliability study, supervisor Barshaf, or, excuse me, manager Barshaf is working with DPW director on sanitary survey. I have offered some comments because there's updates that are needed. It's mainly operational, sanitary survey is what Eagle comes out and does for water, although it says sanitary. So there's operation measures, mainly there was nothing capacity that came out of it as far as deficiencies, everything was adequate. It was really just paperwork that Eagle is needing related to hydrant flushing, asset management plans, water reliability studies. So I've been providing and funneling data to both of those individuals to help provide a response to Eagle on that matter. Water service expansion for Olson's area, the zoning amendment and use change has gone through, and so now I'm working with Brad Olson and their engineer as far as the water main extension is concerned. And I still, I've been talking to Mr. Christensen because we're going to go have an onsite meeting, myself, the supervisor manager, a meeting with Mr. Christensen as far as the property's concerned and booster station, and so that is still an item on my list. I've reached out to Jim, it's just a matter of me finalizing that schedule. We've had quite a few just operation items with DPW I've been navigating through and trying to get caught up, but hoping to get that button up this week. With the booster station itself for the commons, Walton Contracting was retained to provide that, if any of you guys have driven through there, and medical campus, there's been some roads that are closed with the water main installation, but as they're in there with the booster station, I did ask them for pricing for our purposes, because there's infrastructure, piping, pumps, pressure tanks that are decommissioned, and I've asked Walton Contracting just to provide us pricing, since they're there and mobilized, what their cost would be to salvage, remove those items. And it's depending on, because I have a cost perspective in my mind, depending on how those present themselves, I'll follow up with this board on costs, and we can review through that, because at some point we would like to decomish that facility and have it available for future maintenance, but there, like I said, there's a lot of pumps and parts and pieces that we no longer use that could be scrapped and just have a building available for maintenance for DPW. Parks Project River East, all the changes have been made relative to the parking sidewalks, and so I've been working with AJ's on pricing and hoping to get them mobilized yet this fall, so working with them, waiting on pricing from them for change order. The bathroom, I've been having, we went through and updated plans, I'm struggling getting a few things back from our architect that we're working with, and a lot of it's just because they're busy. So I keep leaning on them, but the bathroom itself and the footprint has been laid out. I really just am needing them to finish up the final design on that. So realistically, with the timing of where we're at, that's probably going to be a project that we'll want to probably most likely push till spring, just with costs and wanting to bid that out. But I know a big focus still is with parking sidewalks to the bathrooms and, or not the bathrooms, but the playground equipment. The same is true with pickleball. We did finish up the design for pickleball, but staff discussed with township staff the timing and the way, anything, when we put things out for bid late fall, we don't always, aren't going to like the pricing that we got, that we get. So I think ultimately internally, the decision was from township staff is to wait, put that out for bid in the spring, and so that will have better pricing for that. Trying to think what else. Utility reviews, Windy Hills, we're trying to work with them on closeout. The Brixton I had mentioned, we have Project Alpha in our queue, working with Kingsley Lumber on hydrants. I think I got four stormwater reviews come in this week alone. So, yeah, that's busy, but I am happy to answer any questions this board has for me. Yes, ma'am?
So do you think the, the parking lot and sidewalks will be done yet this year?
That's what I'm working with AJ's on, yeah.
Just not the bathroom?
Not the bathroom. So I mean, we could put it out for bid and get pricing.
We're not going to like it.
We're not going to like it. And the same thing with the pickleball is, is we have a very finite price for the pickleball, and just with recent prices we've been seeing, and that was part of the discussion. Maybe, Chris, you can speak to that a little bit better. I know you've also engaged with Derek and Sean on the pickleball, but ultimately it was just decided if we just wait and solicit for bids December, January, when contractors are looking for work to queue up, that we're going to find better pricing. I mean, we're happy to put it out, but chances are, you know, we always pay a lot, especially when we're talking about for pickleball or the parking lot, which they can start the parking lot work, but when you're trying to do flat work and concrete work in the middle of winter when the ground's frozen, we have to pay a lot more premium and costs to unthaw and heat. And that's, I mean, I work for you guys, so I mean, ultimately, if we want to get pricing just to entertain it and see it, but I think the decision from staff and Parks and Rec was just to kind of wait for the bathroom and the pickleball and put it out for bid, like in December, giving them flexibility for the following year, which will reflect in better pricing.
Well, the parking lot and sidewalk to the playground is very important.
That's, and that's, to me, that's my focus. That's why we're lucky and fortunate to have AJ's, who had read low before, to work with them on pricing. So they do have those plans, and so we have the ability to get mobilized with them, whereas the bathrooms, I mean, we have Porta-Jons out there, and, you know, that's kind of been accounted for for this year, was kind of, I think, the thought process and logic when we discussed it with Park and Rec staff. Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right. Township managers' report.
I have been receiving some phone calls regarding Red Drive and possibly improving that area from people who have gone to Greenspire School, Northwest Ed Administration, and so I'm just doing some research, and I know super, former supervisor Corn may have dealt with this in the past, so I'd like to sit down with you and talk to you and find out what you've learned and...
Certainly.
So that's my plan, but I was throwing this out there, and then somehow the county administrator was in contact with people who had the same concern, so when I met with him last week about Project Alpha and establishing a work relationship as they work through that project, he just kind of brought up the Red Drive matter. Basically, individuals feel like the dirt road portion is pretty rough shape and just asked about improving it. So obviously, that's nothing that I can commit to, but I was going to commit to do some research and try to decide if that's something that this board has interest in, so that was kind of my plan. Sarah Lee, last Friday, or actually prior to last Friday, we received some complaints regarding the smell in that area. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that. So I reached out to the city DPW staff and also them to Sarah Lee to come up with a joint statement, communication to the public, so everybody kind of knew what was going on. So I wrapped that up on Friday morning and put it out on Facebook and also provided that to the ticker. And the city also published that and some other communication areas. And so it sounds like Sarah Lee is responsible for the pre-treatment facility prior to waste getting into the public system, and Garfield really does not have a whole lot of involvement. It's over a scene by the city who uses a contractor to enforce it and administer it, and administer and oversee the permit. That's what I've learned. So they have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow that I've asked to be part of, so I can learn and just understand if there's something that I should be doing more from my end or the township, so it's kind of a learning opportunity for me. So I'll report back on, on that next, next two weeks. But it's, you know, the public wants to know, well, how long will this last? So I'm hoping to get that answered, ensure that information. I'm trying to schedule a meeting at the request of the CEO for the YMCA CEO. He is... He has asked to meet with myself and the supervisor to talk about their Phase Two project. I'm guessing just an update is what he's going to inform us. And that was kind of his plan originally when I met with him months ago is just to keep us informed and work together. The CDBG grant for the flats at Carriage Commons that this board approved, I think it was last meeting, was submitted to Mishtha, so that we're just kind of waiting for the process to play out. I also learned from the Road Commission that the Special Assessment District for the Logan Valley project that was actually gone through the process, I believe it was at the beginning, actually it was last year that this board talked, went through the process and approved that. The, the Road Commission is doing final design on that and they plan to get it out for bid in the winter, hoping that the construction will occur in the summer, midsummer, late summer. So I have communicated that to the point of contact for that, just updated them and they appreciate that. So that is all that I have.
Any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris. Just a couple of things, you know, since our last meeting or, you know, we did attend the nine eleven memorial, it was really nice, Chuck and Chris and I were there. Several people were there. I'd keep it in mind for next year, it's going to be the 25th anniversary already, if you can believe it's been that long. And they're going to do some upgrades, I think, to that memorial and they do a real nice job with that. At the BPW meeting that same day, coincidentally, you know, we raised the issue of, you know, we've had four incidents since July 13th where our infrastructure was damaged, three of them at, at the contractor's fault for sure. You know, the, well, the fourth one is we just don't know who did it, so we, they're probably all at fault necessarily, but so, and I've, I requested that the, that, you know, that we, we, you know, make sure we bill those people for those damages. And there was some question whether the BPW historically has been billing for those of the contractors at fault. Other townships that the BPW stated, well, they, they bill, but there was some disconnect with the BPW staff on whether they actually do bill for those. So I said, we need to bill those contractors for that work when they are clearly at fault. Somebody doesn't wait for a missed dig marking and they dig in and break our water main, they need to pay for that, you know? Or if missed dig does mark it and they decide to go with a backhoe instead of hand dig like they're supposed to, they need to pay for that. So that's my stance and we're pushing them to, to bill those contractors. So some discussion around that. Chris and I met with the Road Commission last week to talk about 2026 projects. So there's three pretty major projects in Garfield Township slated for 2026. The first one is Cass Road is going to be completely reconstructed from South Airport to the Robbins Bridge. I don't know what that length is, but that entire length of, of Cass Road will be reconstructed. The part that'll come back to this board, I know it's a favorite topic of ours, the, the mast arms that are currently at South Airport and Cass will need to be, will, will not, are not structurally adequate to handle the new equipment that will be going in there. So if, if we continue with the mast arm project as we've done in the past, that'll be something or they will be replacing it with a square box post-design. So we probably have several months to, to, to think about that, but that'll be coming probably back before us if we decide to do that. Other projects are reconstruction of Roosh Road, it was another one. And it was the third one, Chris.
Frankie Road.
Frankie Road, yeah, out there by Pine Meyer. So those are the three big ones, all of which definitely need, need attention. So those are the, the big ones. The Roosh Road, we're working with the Road Commission, trying to design, there's, it's the section of Roosh Road from the Montessori School to the busker, the bus entrance on the south side to the junior high, that's the only section in that entire area that the two trails don't connect. So Frankie, huh?
Frankie, not Roosh, right?
Frankie, I'm sorry, did I say Roosh? I posit, Frankie, right behind Meyer. So it's currently a three-lane road with a left turn lane. Well, that section, there's really nowhere for people to turn left anyway. So we're trying to work with the Road Commission to redesign that to add a sidewalk in that area that would connect the two trailheads. So that's a, a big area. So a lot, lot more to be decided on that. And then Roosh Road between Garfield and Hope is, you know, the part of that that's in, in Garfield is in, in rough shape. Part of that's in Blair as well, is just as bad, but we're not too worried about that. So some pretty big projects again next year with the Road Commission, so.
I have a question. On the Cass Road in South Airport regarding the mast arms, would they do the same thing as they're doing right now in front of Lowe's and Meyer's, would go down to one lane?
I, I, I have no idea.
Because you're saying something about changing because of the?
Well, they're, they're going to put new signaling in there. And the new signals, the new signals have the, I got the big black border that surrounds the lights, bringing more visible attention to the lights. If you notice, most of the new ones are coming in. Well, the, the wind resistance on those new designs are substantially more than the old on a rigid, so they're saying those mast arms that were installed, that, that may have been the first intersection in the township that we put mast arms in twenty, twenty-plus years ago. So, and that's one where I didn't notice that they told us that the, you know, when those were first put in the control boxes, we're also matching green while that got blasted by a car years ago. So the, the control box is now gray instead of green. So, but I'm just bringing your attention that they, they, they let us know that those mast arms that are in place won't, won't, don't have the, the ability to carry the new equipment. So now as far as the one lane, I mean, it, Cass Road is going to be, you know, shut down, you know, and that's going to be totally rebuilt, so I'm sure that's going to be.
South Airport Road, because you know what happened when we had the?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I, I don't think it's going to affect East and West South Airport much because it's all south of South Airport. But when the actual control arms and mast arms, whatever's replaced there, it could, you know?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Good question, so. And then the other, other thing, we had BPW Personnel Committee, which is a new committee for me. You know, you, we have a new director, it's funny, we have a new director at BPW, we have a new director, a new fire chief, and we have a MMR director. So a lot of our directors in the area are new, so working through a review process and with the new director of BPW, so that's interesting work. So lots going on, lots going on. Any questions for me? All right, we'll move on to Item Seven under Unfinished Business. Consideration of approving the, the staff wage adjustments based on the wage study that we conducted. Chris, are you handling that or is?
Laurie's good.
Who, who's?
So at prior study sessions, we, I distributed the report from our consultant to the board and have had time to weigh in on it, discuss it at multiple study sessions actually, and discuss if, if the board wanted to adjust wages based on the results of that study. So I, I think at this point, the board needs to discuss, you know, what is it that you want to do collectively? Make that adjustment based on the report, status quo. So I think at this point, you have the information and just need to go ahead and make a decision on how you want to handle it.
You have that motion, right Laurie?
I do. Are you ready for me to make the motion? Okay.
Do you want to have public discussion about that?
We can. I mean, I think, I think it'd be appropriate, so go ahead, Molly, if you want to.
We have discussion after the motion as well.
Yeah, after the motion.
Again, in the middle of it, but yeah, let's talk a little. Well, I, I guess I'll start. We did hire a, a group to come in and do a wage study. We found our wages in the township were very close. And so the board's just been trying to figure out exactly where to go and, and we may be assessing the elected officials at one time and the regular employees at another time. So now I think we're ready to talk about the regular employees. So that's my take.
All right. With that, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve adjusting wages of township employees to bring their wages to a market competitive midpoint based on a salary survey conducted in September 2020, 2025. The purpose of this is to retain talent and ensure fair compensation. Additionally, three employees' wages will be adjusted to market midpoint calculating the percentage of time worked in multiple roles. These adjustments, if you approve, will be effective September 28th, 2025.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and supported as read to use our recent, recently completed wage study and adjust township staff to the midpoint of the recent study. So does anybody have any other comments they'd like to make about that? We've talked about this internally at our study sessions and other meetings, I just don't know if we have any other comments.
Yeah, I think a lot of people want to steal our employees.
It's, it's a competitive market, so absolutely, absolutely. If there's no other discussion on that, do I need a roll on that or just a, a voice vote? Anne, can we have a roll call on that, please?
If I can have, if I can have a copy of the motion. Lap?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right, new business. Public hearing, consideration of, of the amount of property tax millage to levy for the 2026 general and fire fund accounts for Garfield Township. So in front of you, around your packet, excuse me, is the, I believe both the fire fund and the township are the same millages as we're in effect for this year. We're not proposing any increase in millages, just maintaining our millage rates, so.
So you on a motion?
This is a public hearing.
It's public hearing, so. Any questions on that before I open up the public? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody has anything they'd like to say or questions, not really questions about it, now's the time to come forward and ask any questions you might have. I don't see anybody from the public rushing forward, so we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we keep the Garfield Township millage at 1.75 and also the fire millage at 2.75.
I support that motion.
Motion made and supported to maintain the township millage rate at 1.75 and the fire fund at, the fire budget at 2.75 for calendar year 2026. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, Anne, can we have a roll on that one, please?
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right, next is consideration of approving a housing tax increment financing TIF, H-TIF policy, Resolution 2025-28-T. I believe, Chris, you're going to speak to this one?
So in your packet, I included a cover letter kind of explaining it. If you remember in the past, Ann Jamison from the Brownfield, County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, she's the director, she did a presentation, which I also included that in your packet. And, you know, we've been, staff has been working on a policy so that way we can have a set of guidelines and remain consistent in how we approach these in the future. This policy was also created in conjunction with Ann, so that way, you know, at the end of the day, this board has to approve a plan, the County Brownfield Authority has to approve and so has the county board. So the policy kind of remains, allows us to remain on the same kind of playing field as those other entities to ensure consistency. You don't, at the end of the day, you don't want this board to, you know, be in support of it, but then downstream, the county's not in favor of it or the Brownfield Authority. So the, the policy, it's kind of complimentary to, to the counties. And then also, the, the policy considers our master plan and what our visions are as a township and a board. So it just kind of, you know, kind of redirects us, these are important. If you consider this H-TIF as a tool, it, it should be under these conditions. And then again, allows us to remain consistent as we consider all future applications for
Any questions for Chris on that?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-28-T, adopting guidelines for Brownfield projects involving housing tax increment financing.
Support.
Motion made and supported to adopt Resolution 2025-28-T. Any further discussion or questions on that motion? Anne, can we have a roll on that one, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving on, Item E, consideration of permanent restrictions for all non-essential and non-emergency commercial vehicles on Barney Road, Resolution 2025-27-T. This is similar to what we did a, a month or so ago on Town Line. We're putting a Band-Aid fix on Barney Road and we just want to maintain that road as long as we can and just trying to keep the large vehicles off that. They should be able to use C to run. I can't really see the need for any big vehicles to go up Barney anyway, but just as a, give us an opportunity if somebody is using it, that law enforcement can enforce that restriction. So, Chris, if you had anything else other than that on that one?
You summed it up pretty good.
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 2025-27-T, a permanent restriction for all non-essential and non-emergency commercial vehicle on, vehicles on Barney Road.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and supported to adopt Resolution 2025-27-T. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing on, Anne, can I have one more roll, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes, thank you. Takes us to our second and final public comment, so we will open up public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to come forward and say, now's the opportunity to do so again. And our public is not even looking my way, so I'm assuming they don't want to come up and speak, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on. Anything else to come before the board this evening? If not, we would stand adjourned.